Welcome to the Monday, April 26th, meeting of the City Council's Natural Resources Subcommittee. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 20, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the City of Westfield Natural Resources Committee will be conducted via remote participation. Specific information can be found on the City of Westfield website at www.cityofwestfield.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by tuning into Channel 15 or Channel 12 or online at westphiltv.org or online at youtube.com/westfieldcommunityprogrammingchannel. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the city's website an audio recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The access information for this meeting is online at cityofwestfield.org. In the agendas, there is a live link in the agenda, and there's also the phone number listed there. So pardon me one second while I get my other documentation up. So item number one, I will call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And roll call, Councillor Ali?
Yeah.
Councillor Morganelli?
Here.
And Councillor Mello is here. Next reading of the record, do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Ali, second by Councillor Morganelli. Any discussion?
Please just state the date of the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, that would be the March 22nd, 2021. So motion made in second and roll call vote, Councillor Ali?
Yes.
Councillor Morganelli?
Yes.
And Councillor Mello, yes. Number four, public participation, is any member of the public interested in speaking to the Natural Resources Committee? Or did anyone receive any communication from constituents?
Yeah. It's not, Madam Chair, I did receive an email about trees that are blocking a road, and I guess it is a through road, so I'm actually gonna, Scott, we're gonna be calling you about that. And I'm gonna meet with the person and go take a look at the situation and see what she's talking about. I thought they were doing tree work on that road about a month or two ago, and it was all, it was being taken care of, but evidently there's still some trees that are down in that area. I don't know how much they're blocking the road. I think it's, it's not really a through street, but it's supposed to be. It's, I'm not sure, it starts with an S, I don't have it in front of me, I wasn't prepared to publicly participate, but I just wanted to mention that, that it's, you know, just for the public too that's watching, you can always, you know, call the DPW office, call your ward councillor, an at-large councillor if there's any issue in the city. And the See Click Fix app, if you have that on your mobile device, is really a great tool because you can report something, whether it's a pothole, or a downed tree, or a stop sign that's broken, it could be anything. And you can take a picture of it, you can load it into the app, and tell you the DPW department, it tells you how many thousands of calls they've responded to and situations they've fixed through the app. So I think it's a great tool, I want to commend, I don't know, whoever initiated that and got the app, got us into with the app, because it really does make a huge difference. I can attest to the fact that I've reported so many different things using the app because it's very convenient, and we know, you know it goes right there, I can do it immediately, I don't have to get to my computer, get to the email, and I know it's going right to the department that, or the departments that is directly impacted or that needs to pay attention to it, whether it's a police issue, or fire, or DPW. So thank you, and just wanted to mention that as well. But I'll, I'll be taking care of that issue with, and see if, see if we can find a resolution for the downed trees that are out there.
Thank you, Councillor Morganelli, do I hear a motion to close public participation?
Motion to close public participation.
Second.
Motion made in second and roll call vote, Councillor Ali?
Yes.
Councillor Morganelli?
Yes.
And Councillor Mello, yes. So number five, communications of departments and city officers. Director Kane?
Yes, so thank you for having us, and actually, just having this meeting is a great progress since we've kind of been talking about this. So for a number of years, we had a tree warden. It was the former, not Dave, the individual before him, was paid a stipend to be the tree warden for the city, which is a requirement, to best my knowledge, under Chapter 87 of Mass General Laws, that a city town will have, you know, a person responsible for the care and well-being of, and the health of the trees in the city. Dave, when Dave took over, you know, he did not take a stipend for that position, nor did he really, I mean, he oversaw and did what he had to do, but he was not in performing as an official tree warden, if you will. He didn't think that he's qualified, and therefore didn't think it warranted that he would receive a stipend for that. Short time later, we hired Scott Hathaway down at Land and Natural Resources Park and Recreation, and you know, it was the hope and thought that he would be able to take over, take the reins of a tree warden, and which he did, and has been, but to this day has not been compensated for that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, that's not even in your current job description?
That's, yes, it's separate, so yeah, there's, I got.
Sorry to interrupt, Scott, so I believe at the time when Scott was hired, the personnel director at the time didn't, didn't want to agree to that Scott would warrant getting a stipend, and hence here's where we're at now. You know, basically, I believe the way it read would be that, you know, to be a tree warden, you'd need all the prerequisites and the education as such, which Scott has. The DPW director we had prior to Dave, that was basically, the way the law reads it, I believe you can put a person in that position if you don't have a qualified position and superintendent of highways, or DPW could assume that role until such time that, you know, you found a person. So that's kind of that in a nutshell. But along with that, we've also, so I believe, at the very least, what we'd like to accomplish is that Scott is, you know, officially designated tree warden and paid as such. That would be, you know, quick and dirty if we could do that, I think that would satisfy a lot. But with that, we've, you know, been looking at the city ordinances and the park and rec and land and rec, natural resources. It's really not a streamlined ordinance, if you will, and it's kind of duplicates in some ways and leave some things out. So we were kind of proposing that we eliminate certain sections of that and just call it park and rec, and the land and natural resources activities would be rolled into the park and rec as well. And so, you know, the more detailed language that is kind of spelled out in the attachments, that's kind of in a nutshell.
Okay, Mr. Hathaway, is there something that you would like to add before the councillors are able to exchange?
No, everything that Fran said is, yeah, it's spot on, so we've been, when I was hired, Dave had said, you know, that you'll have that stipend, and that would, you know, help out as far as taking a pay cut to come work for the city. And I was like, great, okay, and then we just started work. When it didn't happen, I kind of asked, and then, you know, it kind of evolved to where we are now. And Fran has taken it and brought it all the way up to this point where it hasn't ever been. So I'm thrilled to have it, I'm sick of asking. And I tell Fran all the time, I say, I can't stand, you know, just, how's it going? Is there anything I can do, kind of, you know? So he's, he's done a great job in getting you all on board and understanding what, you know, what the situation is. So that's all I have to say.
And if I might, may I add one thing? I see Dan had his hand raised.
I only, if I hear a motion to take items out of order so that seven could come before six, then they could certainly talk back and forth about it.
All right. We're right in the middle of one other thing, so, all right, so I'm gonna make a motion to take item number seven out of order. I'll suspend the rules to take item seven out of order. Somebody wake up, Nick?
Oh.
So yes, Nick?
Second, yeah.
Motion made in second, and roll call, Councillor Ali?
Yes.
Councillor Morganelli?
Yes.
Councillor Mello, yes, go ahead, Fran, and then Dan can talk too.
Okay, so I just wanted to add that also, you know, Scott is a very dedicated individual and employee, and that has not stopped him. He had more than enough qualifications when he came over to the city side, you know, from UMass and his experience in trees and turf management and such, but he also took that and really rolled with it when he came on the city, and he has taken countless trainings in his certified tree warden, and he's done everything, Member of Mass Tree Wardens Association, and attends all their meetings, he has really taken this to the next level and is the individual and what you want in this position, not just in name only and collecting funds for it. He's, he's done the job without even being compensated for it, as far as I'm concerned, that's all.
Thank you. Councillor Ali?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Scott has done a great job on so many different situations and trees that, since he's been there. You know, I deal with a lot of people, they tend to call, I always work with the ward councillors, but I follow up, and he has been extremely responsive, they've always done a great job, they've gone over and above in certain situations. I don't have access to my emails, so do I understand correctly that, like, some of this language that would change the ordinance, that's already been, like, somewhat written, Fran?
Yes, I mean, it's not formalized, but some of the, the talking points, if you will, have been discussed.
Because I guess what my question would be is, so you're submitting that to us now, because that has, that has to go to LNO, and they'll actually work on the ordinance?
Right.
Correct.
So, okay.
So I'm thinking it would be take a couple iterations, and then we'll come to some type of, you know.
And submit it to the council?
I think it's interesting to note too, Dave, you know, was fully able to take advantage of that stipend, which he didn't, and, you know, since, since Dave was there, it's like $25,000 or $30,000 that he would have been well entitled to, and he did not take it. So the city hasn't spent any money on a tree warden, for sure, so.
Right, but Scott, right, I still don't understand why they wouldn't just make Scott the tree warden, but anyways. Like I said, Scott's done a great job, I mean, we'd be blessed to have him as a tree warden, and that should have just been taken care of. Like you said, the language has to be cleaned up a little bit. And then you would probably, what, submit it from your department to the council, and then it would go to LNO officially?
Yeah, I guess.
Because they had to get to the council before they can get to our subcommittee. And it would get sent to LNO, not here, I mean, if we can work on it?
Yes, it seemed like this was a starting point, for sure.
Right, and we, if I may, we brought it in here because Councillor Niski and I had discussed it, and because it has such an impact, and because of the way that natural resources divisions are used in other cities, it's good for us to hash it out before it goes somewhere else, because if we have objections to losing Chapter 13, right? Because when, when you go into the documentation, what you'll see is that the fastest way to get the mission accomplished is to remove Chapter 13 and collapse that division and put it under park and rec. Because there is, it gets its own budget, but there is no director, right? From my understanding of the communications thus far. So my position would be, first of all, that I think that we need to have probably, and by we, I think you guys, I don't know that we, the legislative body, would need to be involved, but I think that the personnel director and whoever is in charge of unions in the law department and the mayor, y'all need to sit down and make sure that Scott's taken care of for the work that he's performed for the city in a way that is okay with the labor laws of the state and the way that the contracts are with the city. And that's something that we don't have the power to do, to make sure that he is pulled for the job that he has done for us. But with respect to the future, collapsing that division may or may not have consequences that we understand before it moves. And so before it goes to LNO, if we take the time to make those investigations, rather than have LNO do their work, and then we come in and say, oh, wait a minute, did you think of, right? So let us do the thinking of, and then when we know what it needs to look like, hand it over to the people who know how to shape that, is, would be my point. Councillor Morganelli, you wanted to say something?
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, so I've got, I've got my, my book here. This is from when I was chair of this committee, subcommittee, back in 2008. And on May 7th, 2008, we were talking with the law department about the tree warden issue, and we got a response back citing the Mass General Laws, and we, so we went, we went through this process back in 2008. And I think out of that, I believe that's where the lands, the Office of Lands and Natural Resources was, for the city was developed. So we have that office now. And Fran, tell me if I'm wrong on this, but we have that office, and Scott is the, the tree warden and in charge of the Office of Lands and Natural Resources, but there's no, there's no staff, or there is a staff for that office?
Staff, and that's the problem, though, park and rec and land and natural resources, that's just, they're essentially one and the same. All the, I believe the only park and rec staff is Peggy and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong on that, Scott? And all the other staff perform park and rec functions, mow the lawns and all that, but they're all land and natural resources and employees, and you do have the tree crew as well. In 2008, obviously, we weren't consolidated as a, as a, you know, consolidated DPW, so I think that kind of changes things as well, because you have level, the deputies of each, each division as well, being park and rec and land and natural resources division. So and I believe the only thing that changes is the, just brings the tree stuff into park and rec.
Okay, so, okay, so if we, if we, well, I mean, what we'll do is, we're gonna look at your recommendations, we'll be talking back and forth on the phone and that kind of thing, and we'll come up as a committee, a subcommittee will come up with a solid way to, to do this. But as Councillor Mello, as Madam Chair said, you know, I'm sure you and the mayor and park and rec have all talked already and said, yeah, we like that plan, because we're not gonna act on something unless you guys have already talked about it, say, this is what we think would work, this is what would consolidate our departments, make it more efficient, make it, et cetera, et cetera. The one thing I, and Scott, you do a phenomenal job with the trees, and I know you get the certifications for the tree, you know, as tree warden, and you need that for, you know, pest control and all kinds of different things. And I know that the stipend came up, you know, more than 10 years ago when we looked at this, and I don't know where it's written, I thought I saw somewhere, and it's like, if it's a $5,000 stipend for the tree warden, is that correct?
Yes.
For a year? Yeah, and I'm not sure why that even, why that's even there. And it also says in the charter that, you know, we can pay for this position through federal and state funding, so we don't even have to use taxpayer dollars to pay for this position. We should be seeking monies to cover the trees, I mean, we have so many trees and tree issues in Westfield. It's a constant, and I know, Scott, you can attest to that, with, I'm sure you answer calls every day, if not many. So I know there's certainly some funding that, you know, would be available for that, we should, we should certainly look into that. But funding aside, our job, I mean, that's really, the money for that is really up to the mayor and the budget, and if there's any union things involved, as was said before, were said in emails and so forth. But what we really want to do is just to help facilitate what makes the best sense for the tree warden position, and the Office of Lands and Natural Resources, like, so we'll take your recommendations, and then we would work on that, and then, like was said, we'll go to legislative ordinance for a rubber stamp or any kind of things that they want to, you know, tweak on it, but they'll, most likely they'll take our recommendation on it if we've done a lot of the homework. And we can also do a joint committee meeting with them, so that we're there to discuss, we could do a joint Zoom, you know, committee meeting with legislative ordinance too, that can work that way as well. Instead of just referring it, we'll just be part of their meeting, or they'll be part of our meeting at some point, and hopefully in the next month or so. But so I guess, is that, does that kind of sum up, Fran, what, so you, you've got recommendation, and that's, that's what you?
Yeah, that's, I believe, funding wise, that's been in the budget for years now, and like I said, with Dave's tenure here, we didn't spend any of that money, so that.
Okay.
It's definitely there, and I think maybe, from a union standpoint, maybe rather than having it a stipend, put it into the park and rec or land and natural resources, and just have that as part of the salary, and don't even, and that comes certain prerequisites, you know, upon Scott's departure, that someone, you know, would have to meet all this.
That's exactly, yeah, that was the big thing with me.
That, that, to me, that would make the most sense, and then you're not going through this again. I mean, the person that, was a means of, oh, we gotta have a tree warden person, so by default, he got it. And I believe the way the rules are written, that it does become someone like the Superintendent of Highway or whatever, or Department of Public Works, kind of defaults to that, but doesn't necessarily have to have the qualifications.
Wasn't it that if the, if the position became vacant, then it would default to the superintendent, or deputy superintendent of public works or whatever, and then they would get a stipend because they're taking on that extra responsibility of, as tree warden? I don't, I don't know that, isn't that, isn't that where that stipend comes in? It's like if the position's vacant or something like that?
Exactly, but it's not really in Scott's job description, nor him, his, you know, compensation is not there for that.
Okay.
What would be, like, say Scott was.
So, yeah, so Scott, were you hired, were you hired to take care of the trees when you were hired?
Well, it was, yes, basically, so, and when I talked with Dave, you know, because we were trying to negotiate the salary, we had brought that up to say, oh, well, if we bring this in, that'd bump you back up, and so it wouldn't be such a pay cut to come, which I was happy to take. And, but yeah, that's, that's kind of how it started, and then because, because of the verbiage on the ordinance saying director, that's where, when Jane was the personnel director, she kind of like said, no, Dave's the only one that can get it. And then, and you heard Fran talk about, you know, why Dave didn't, didn't take it. And the other reason, really important, is to have the quals in the ordinance for the person that takes over for me, for the betterment of the city, for the future, because we're putting in all new programs that haven't, you know, never happened before. So the person I handed off to, I really would like to have, you know, good qualifications, so we're moving the same direction, and it'll be fantastic for the city. So you're not starting all over with someone just saying, yeah, go ahead, cut that tree down, here's a note. And that's what I, you know, found all through the records, are these little, yeah, just like a typed up note, you have permission to cut this tree down, and go, that's, that's not how we, we shouldn't be working like that. So we need to go forward and have it all worded correctly, and that was, I was really concerned about that. So this is great, I'm really happy that it's moving forward.
Too, when Scott was initially being brought on board, the thought was that it was gonna be a no-brainer, and that he would get that tree, you know, we had always had the hopes that he would, or that in anticipation that he was gonna take care of the trees, we knew that, now we're part of his job, and then we thought that the stipend that, you know, Dave was not taking could, would just be transferable to Scott. And when it came down to brass tacks with the personnel director, she said, no, it's not, it's, I.
I mean, why, why, if the, if the, if the, the rule says that the stipend goes to the tree, acting tree warden in the absence of a tree warden, or the acting deputy superintendent, or whoever's taking care of the trees when we don't have a specific trained, titled tree warden that we've hired to be just the tree warden, and that's it. And usually it defaults to somebody else, because we're not, you know, hired for that one position, how are you gonna find? So why, why, why hasn't he gotten this stipend the whole time? I don't understand that, this isn't, this isn't a natural resources committee issue, the fact that he didn't get paid what he should get paid, just so everybody watching knows, this is not our issue, our issue is with the, the ordinance to work on it, make it better, and then go to legislative ordinance, but.
I think you're correct, Councillor Morganelli, I think that that is beyond this committee's purview, but I, but I think that it is within the purview of this committee to write a letter explaining what our opinion about steps forward might be with respect to speaking to our new personnel director and our city solicitor and whatever union labor needs to comb through this.
It's a mayoral issue, Madam Chair.
Yeah, with Mayor Humison, as a recommendation to the mayor, I would, I would be willing to, you know, hear a motion to that effect if,
Yeah.
if that is something that this committee feels like they would want to do. And then, and then further, you know, continue to work on this ordinance. I would like to say, though, in other municipalities, the Division of Natural Resources is used to help support the conservation efforts, the open planning, the open spaces, and also natural law enforcement, environmental law enforcement and code enforcement. So before abolishing that division, perhaps it was created for more purposes than one, and we need to take a look at that before it were collapsed for this reason. But I think we can address them separately and, you know, speak, if the committee wanted to send a letter to the mayor with a suggestion as to how to carry forward financially, at least to address the situation, and then to ask the appropriate people, including conservation and planning, because they were just talking about enforcement, whether or not the removal of this division is going to impact their plans for the future, before we would take such a step. I'm open to hearing motions, if you like, or if Director Kane or Mr. Hathaway would like to say?
No, I think to counter, kind of, to Councillor Morganelli's point, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, it was clearly stated that the superintendent, not director, superintendent of highways, this is prior to us being one unified DPW, that he, he's only mentioned in writing that he gets a stipend, it doesn't, you know, and I believe that was a, it's either a city council thing or whatever, but that's how it's written, written, and that's why the personnel director at the time said, no, Scott does not get that. And it should have been hashed out right then and there, but it was just, said, no, he's not getting it, and we, you know, didn't think that it would get to this level as. And I do appreciate that if these aren't, financial matters aren't really necessarily part of this committee, I understand that, but it kind of goes part and parcel with what.
What is the ballpark sum total we're talking here?
Well, if we go by the stipend, I don't know if there is a set amount by any kind of statute or anything like that, but I believe it's $5,000 was the stipend, so that's kind of the figure that we've gone along with, you know, have just, and actually entertained with Scott when we were talking about hiring him, because that's all we had to go by. We weren't looking to increase it or anything like that, that's the number that we had, and yeah. And then, like I said, with Dave not taking it, it's been, you know, tens of thousands that have not been spent, but yet the work's getting done.
I think Krista's trying to say. I think Chris is trying to say what, how much retroactive?
Yeah, what's your tenure?
So it's, uh, I don't know, what am I, four years now here? Around there, I think.
So this is a question of $20,000?
Correct.
See, but I, I get, Madam Chair.
Yes, this is Counselor Morganelli.
Again, this is, this is not a natural resources, that this is certainly a city council issue. If we got a, um, request from the mayor for $20,000 to pay in, uh, you know, uh, retro, uh, to the tree warden, Scott. Um, and we had a discussion about it in a city council meeting and we, we, uh, it may, I, I, I guess it would go to the Finance Committee at that point, so that, so as on a separate issue, I think we, we need to address the money um, for the tree warden, because if, if, um, the, the mayor needs to send us a request, it needs to go to the Finance Committee and they will vote on just the money. And i- and, and we can, and we will certainly have this discussion that we've been having in, right here with the full council. And we'll be given evidence and you, you guys will talk and, you know, and, and we'll, you know, the mayor can justify why he would like to pay, uh, Scott, pay you the $20,000, you know, for the last four years. And Fran can attest to that and we, you know, um, Dave Phillips can attest to the work that you've done in the past years and all that. So, but as far as the, the ordinance goes, we want to make sure that it's, it's in the right place so that, uh, if there is this stipend going forward, that it's, it's written in there or that it's, you know, I, I think it's written somewhere. I know, I remember, I've seen the $5,000 number somewhere and I, I can't recall where it is. But, so I just want you to know, the financial matter, not part of this committee. It is a mayoral matter that should come to the City Council and go to the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Morganelli.
And, and Scott, I, I, I can certainly attest to the, all the work you've done. And if the stipend is supposed to be given to you, then I, I'm, I'm really sad that you didn't get that, um, money for four years from the Personnel Department, or whoever was supposed to cut that check or whatever that, that, if that was supposed to happen, then you certainly, uh, should have gotten that and, you know.
Counselor Ali?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, because it sounds like the, the stipend was in lieu of not having, uh, a tree warden. And so the duties of organizing that and, uh, you know, running all, all that work and equipment or whatever, uh, of that department would fall to the DPW Director or that supervisor in whatever town it would be. And they would get that money to do that. So it, it sounds like at this point, I mean, it would just become part of, you know, the salary. You'd, you'd probably still always have, um, a provision where if you did not have a tree warden, the DPW Director or Supervisor would get or be eligible for that stipend. So that part I don't think would go away. I think it's just amending it so that, um, because that, that's, that's the situation you may find yourself in. You know, you're just asking the supervisor, the director to take on extra duties, making sure that, you know, work's taken done, you know? Everything that goes into what, what these guys are doing for this type of work. Um, and he's getting compensated for it and Dave chose not to do it. So it's almost like we need to like, just maybe, maybe even just boost the salary for this position. Or, you know, I mean, it's almost like that would be separate and then it's up to the mayor to make it retroactive. Because I think the stipend would always have to be there, right? And you may, you may find yourself without a tree warden someday. And if it falls to the Director or the Supervisor, why do you want to leave that in there?
Yeah. Okay, so it looks like we have some more homework to do. And, um, do you want us to come back to you?
I, how, how about we investigate the intended and unintended consequences of the path that we have in front of us, uh, laid out by the Law Department? And then, um, that way, any, any other stuff we need to bring into the conversation can come in. Um, in the meantime, I would check with Personnel and the Personnel Action Committee about, um, the actual job descriptions that exist now, the salaries that go with them and whether or not, um, a simple correction could be done before the next budget season, right? Because then the problem would be solved with a Personnel Description Change, a Job Description Change and, you know, a, a small appropriation, right? And then the ordinance stuff, which always takes longer than you think. Right, then your outstanding problem would be solved, but your ordinance stuff, you know, could take its normal course without keeping people in the lurch.
Let things catch up, okay.
Right, so if that's, uh, I would think Personnel, Personnel Action, um, the labor lawyer that we hired and law and the mayor. Right, and I, and I really don't think that this is a huge sum. I think this is something that if you get the right people on a Zoom together, the problem can be solved.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll look up the unintended consequences and we can all meet back, uh, by email. And then, uh, if we need to chat on the record in person, we'll do it in May.
Sure.
Is that okay? And thank you for bringing it up because, you know, it, it's not cleared. The ordinances are a little wonky and we're happy to do the work. So thank you very much for coming and we're, we're happy to help.
We're taking the time and thank you for your confidence and, uh, your compliments.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much for coming in, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Counselors, may I hear a motion?
Return to normal order?
Uh, we're going to keep it in committee?
Oh, yeah.
At least, yeah.
Continue to, uh, work on this, um, in the coming weeks, months and leave in committee.
Second.
Motion made in second, uh, roll call, Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Morganelli?
Yes.
And Counselor Mello, yes, thanks so much, guys. And, uh, email if you need anything, okay?
Yes, thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Good night.
You get a whole lot of people.
Okay, uh, may I hear a motion to return to normal order?
Motion to return to normal order.
Right, sorry.
Second, yeah. Okay, um, roll call vote, Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Morganelli?
Yes.
Counselor Mello, yes. Uh, item number seven is, oh no, we did that. Item number six is the old business. Um, first is update on the motion about Bay PAC. Counselor Morganelli, do you have any updates?
Um, I'm trying to think of the last, uh, the last time I, I gave an update. I believe I mentioned that the mayor, uh, Mayor Humison, uh, mentioned that he was in favor of it. Um, he, the email, I'll read some of the email that he sent to myself. And he also, um, uh, copied, uh, Counselor Bridget, uh, Matthews Kane on this as well. Uh, but he, he thanked me for the, uh, the phone call and, uh, this was back from, from February. So I think we may have addressed this in March. I'm not sure if I read part of the email, but, um, he said he shared the goal of protecting the aquifer. Um, he also says that, um, he spoke with his colleague, Mayor Nicole LeChapelle about it. Um, and, uh, and because of, of COVID and, um, related matters and different things that, um, the city budget process, personnel issues, um, he, he needed to, uh, reach out, uh, uh, to her. So he, he didn't have a chance to read, to speak with her yet. I believe she's in, um, I don't know if she's, uh, Southham, uh, East Hampton, Southampton or, or Southwick. I don't know, Southwick doesn't, I don't think has a mayor.
No.
Um, and then, uh, she, he also mentioned that, um, uh, that, uh, he cited Shanna Reed, Attorney Reed's, uh, January 20th memo, uh, from 2021, uh, that, uh, reconstituting Bay PAC is, uh, is may not be the best option for the city. Uh, there might be other mechanisms to advocate for the Barnes Act for without, um, you know, giving some of the Westfield control over the aquifer to other neighboring towns. Because Bay PAC remembers it, it was with other cities and towns that surround and, you know, utilize the aquifer and that kind of thing. So, um, uh, he said he was open to considering other options and, uh, and, and to, so that the, the outcome is the same, that we're protecting the aquifer. He's, he's for that, uh, of course. So, um, so that's it. He just looked, he's looking forward to, you know, to discussing it more and, uh, uh, talking with, uh, I'll have to follow up with him on that and see if he, if he actually talked with, uh, Mayor LeChapelle about it yet. Um, so that, that's basically it. I mean, there are other possibilities other than bringing back, uh, Bay PAC as that kind of organization. There's other ways to do it. Um, so we really need to look at what we would like to do, um, if we want to have that or do a, a different, uh, do it a different way and, and keep it just Westfield, just under Westfield control, so to speak. Or maybe just the citizens of Westfield, um, you know, being involved and not neighboring cities or towns.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Morganelli. Um, so, uh, at the last meeting, there had been a public records request that was shared, uh, with us regarding Bay PAC and its origins and communications about it. So, uh, the thing is, those were many, 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 many several dozens of pages. So, uh, we made a motion at the last meeting, um, for me to condense the entire thing and bring it back into committee, um, so that it was, you know, the Cliff's Notes version, uh, which there is one more public records request outstanding, so, um, it's almost done, but not quite there. And that is where it was left. So it was left in committee for that as well. So, um, I would entertain a motion to keep it in committee and, um, update again in May.
Motion to leave in committee.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, uh, any further discussion? Is there anything else you want us to look into? Do you want to comment, Counselor Ali?
Um, well, LeChapelle is the mayor of East Hampton and, and was it, I wasn't clear, were they in favor or, or they would? Because he went into somebody having a concern about Bay PAC, but was it, it wasn't the mayor, was it?
No, that, are you asking me, Counselor Ali?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's just that Mayor Humison had not had a chance to speak with her yet, so.
Okay, right.
He's looking forward to talking and, but he's not sure that that's the route he wants to go either, because it would, again.
Yeah, it's a big part of this. I know, all right, I, I don't really know that. But the, the big part of this will be obviously the mayor's, both cities being in favor of it going forward. And any one part, I mean, because they're going to initiate whatever's going on. So any type of agreement or commitment is, you know, and that's a big part of moving forward. And you can get all the information you want, but if you, you, two mayors at least have to be open to talking about it. You know, and, and negotiating it.
And, and again, just to, for the public and to, to remind everybody that this is a, again, a mayoral decision. The mayor is the one that would, um, you know, come up with the agreement, the Bay PAC agreement and run it forward and all that kind of thing. So, uh, but this committee could certainly make a recommendation if we find that there's a different way to protect the aquifer, uh, that other communities across the country have done, that we like that method better. Uh, then, then we need to, uh, do due diligence and, you know, recommend some, bring it out of committee at some point and, and recommend something. We recommend to the mayor to, to go forward with Bay PAC. We recommend that he not do this other thing. Um, and we vote on the council to, to recommend, you know, or not recommend.
Right, well, let's remember that Bay PAC has always been an advisory committee. So it's not about anybody else having control. Um, it's only ever been advisory and first. And second, um, I, I would venture to say that, uh, the other communities use their, uh, Natural Resources Division to do that kind of protection. So, um, you know, we should probably take a really strong look at what the other alternatives are, uh, before we start moving on ordinances. Um, and let's investigate everything. Uh, so shall we have a motion to keep, do we did that? So do we?
Did the motion.
We did the motion, so we just need the roll call vote.
Just roll on that, yeah.
Oh, wait, is that, do we have anything else you need to say? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Morganelli?
Yes.
And Counselor Mello, yes. Uh, so part B under Old Business is the update on the discussion of the items in committee list. Um, so not all of those record requests have returned yet to find out if the answers are the answers. Um, and that only covers a portion of the items that were in that original list. So, um, the condensing of that still needs to take time. I am hoping it will be done by the time we meet in May, uh, but I can keep you updated, uh, by email as we go. So if we could have a motion to keep in.
Motion to, uh, keep, I, B eight, well, six B in, in committee?
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote. Wait, did you have anything else you want to say about that? Not so much. Okay, Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Morganelli?
Yes.
And Counselor Mello, yes. Uh, does anyone have any, um, unanticipated for the agenda business to discuss?
You have a very entertaining cat behind you.
Uh, you know, he has a thing about being in the Zooms. I don't understand it. I, I don't understand.
Mine usually, we have two and what mine usually comes over here. I don't know where he is, he's probably sleeping. They nap all the time.
Yes, this is Boris.
Yeah, and then for some reason you're like in black and white, so it's almost like the Addams Family.
You know, I have tried so hard to get the lighting right in this room, but as the sun sets, everything changes.
I love it. I, I just, the, the cat needs to be more in the frame. I think we need to see the cat's head. Um, we'll never get rid of it at that point. There he is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but when he's standing up.
I got a little more tissue thing on.
Everybody bring their cats to the meeting for me, okay?
Sorry, I'm so.
Um, so, uh, just so you know, we did invite, uh, the National Guard to come and give us an update on, um, I don't know if you're aware, there was a foam discharge up at the base last week. So, uh, we did have some communication and we invited them to give us an update. Um, I did get the DEP file number, so, um, I believe that you were BCC'd on an email about that. Um, although Counselor Ali, if you want, I can help you, uh, after so that you can access that. Um, so I, I don't have anything further other than what the DEP had. The National Guard has not gotten back to me and they did not attend our meeting. So we do not have anything more than what the DEP has online available for everyone. And that's everything I have, uh, so unless you have something else.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any discussion?
Lunch will be more fun for everyone.
He's trying to jump back up on the chair. Roll call vote, Counselor Ali?
Yes.
Counselor Morganelli?
Sure, yes.
Counselor Mello, yes, the meeting is adjourned at 7:47. Thank you so much.